Monday, October 15th. And we'll note that all commissioners are present. First item of business is the approval of the order of business. Are there any changes to the order of business? Hearing none, would there be a motion to approve the order of business?
I'll make that motion.
We have the motion, the second. Further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Those say nay. The motion carries. The next item then is the consent agenda. Are there any items on the consent agenda you wish to discuss? Not, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll move.
Do we have a second? We have the motion, the second. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mr. Steiner.
Aye.
Mr. Frenzel.
Aye.
Ms. Altman.
Aye.
Mr. Jackson.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. We'll move to tab four and we'll hear the financial report from Mrs. Johnson.
Good evening, Mr. President, Commissioners. I'd like to highlight a few items from the financial report through July. We'll begin with the general fund report. With 58 percent of the year completed, our property taxes equal $3 million and were 98 percent collected compared to budget. Our other taxes and fees, which include things like financial institution tax and franchise fees, are 82 percent collected compared to budget. Our intergovernmental revenues include those revenues we receive from the state and local governments, such as highway distribution tax and the oil production tax, and is 52 percent collected compared to budget. We did receive $500,000 of oil production tax money in July due to the increase in our mining-related jobs to 9.2 percent. This amount has been included in our new oil impact fund, which is where we will account for all revenues associated with oil impact. Our licenses, fees, and services include such things as building permit revenue and oil royalties, and is 41 percent collected compared to budget. Our building permit revenue is up 41 percent over last year. This category also includes our municipal court fines, which are also, which are up 30 percent over last year. Our sales of city lots and equipment, we have sold $1.3 million of city lots through July. Our total general fund revenues equal $7.1 million and were 76 percent collected compared to budget. In our general fund expenses, our general government, which includes administration, court, finance, and assessing, is 62 percent expended compared to budget. Our public safety, which includes police and fire, is 55 percent expended compared to budget. Our engineering and streets is 51 percent expended. And our cultural services, which includes museum and forestry, is 46 percent expended compared to budget. Our contingency and reserve includes the West River Community Center major maintenance reserve, and our contingency, which is, which holds our 20 percent share of the regional transit building. Our total general fund expenses equal $5.2 million through July, and were 56 percent expended compared to budget. In our enterprise funds, this slide shows our water and wastewater funds, which we have combined in 2011 to better reflect like operations. Our revenue is $3.4 million and is 67 percent collected compared to budget, which is 36 percent more than last year at this time. The large increase in revenue in 2011 is due to the bulk water sales at our water vendor. Our expenses total $2.2 million, which is 57 percent expended compared to budget. Our solid waste fund also shows an increase in revenue due to added accounts for both residential and commercial growth. Our revenue is $1.5 million through July, which is 70 percent collected compared to budget, and about 16 percent more than last year. Our expenses are $946,000, which is 50 percent expended compared to budget. In our sales tax reports, the sales tax information was updated for July on the sheets that you received this evening. In our 1 percent sales tax fund, we've received $354,000 of revenue in July, which is up 35 percent for the year. Our expenses include $430,000 paid towards job creation and senior programs, and $800,000 paid towards the Badlands Activity Center. Our half percent sales tax, we received $177,000 of revenue, which is also up 35 percent for the year. Our expenses include $503,000 towards the West River Community Center bond. Our hospitality tax, we received $78,000 of revenue in July, which is up 37 percent over last year. This increase, this is, excuse me, our expenses total $358,000, which includes our BAC pledge payment, the CVB special events grant, and their subsidy, and our chamber membership. Our occupancy tax breakdown shows our revenues and expenditures total $213,000 through July. This is 107 percent increase over last year. All occupancy tax revenues collected, minus the small admin fee, are paid to the CVB each month. In our street projects report, we've received $99,000 in revenues, and we've expended $374,000 towards projects through July. In our development impact fee program, this schedule shows the impact fee projects that have been approved and the funds available for future projects, which stands at a negative $103,000 at the end of July. The timing of construction compared to special assessments received will help alleviate this negative balance. And the 2011 budget reforecast highlights the general fund revenues that have been reforecasts since our budget was approved last September. Most changes are due to the impact of oil development in our area, which increased considerably in the fourth quarter of 2010. The reforecast of sales tax was included as an additional column in each of their respective Those are some of the highlights. Are there any questions?
Mrs. Johnson, for July, did you notice any unusual expenditures or any unusual shortfalls or in revenues or increases in revenues?
No. Our biggest increase would have been for the bulk water sales, and our expenses right now are below our percentage budgeted, so.
All right. Any questions for Mrs. Johnson? All right. Thank you for your report. Would there be a motion to approve the report as presented?
I'll move.
Is there a sec? And we have the second. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mr. Jackson.
Aye.
Mr. Frenzel.
Aye.
Mr. Altman.
Aye.
Mr. Steiner.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. So we go to item B, Building Code Requirements. This is an ordinance, and Mr. Corton, would you introduce this?
Mr. President, Commissioners, this is the second reading of the Building Code, Building Code Requirements. This is an amendment to Chapter Nine of the Municipal Code that pertains to building codes. It essentially is a housekeeping measure that also includes or fills out a chart for climatic and geographic design criteria based upon the, based upon the attachment attained within the ordinance. Staff recommends approval.
Thank you, Mr. Corton. Is there anyone from the public that would like to comment on this proposed ordinance? If so, you can step to the podium now, state your name, and we'd hear your comments. Anyone from the public? There's no one from the public that wishes to comment? Any comments by city staff or city commissioners? Not, is there a motion regarding the second reading and final passage?
Move the approved second reading and final passage of ordinance number 1422.
I'll second it.
We have the motion, the second. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mr. Steiner.
Aye.
Mr. Altman.
Aye.
Mr. Jackson.
Aye.
Mr. Frenzel.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. That motion carries. Brings us to item C, Wastewater Treatment Plant Amendment. Mr. Sorn, did you want to introduce this item?
Sure. Thank you, President Johnson, City Commissioners. In 2009, we, we had Apex, or it was actually Alteg do a master plan of our wastewater treatment facility and go through what the proposed changes would be for that facility. Over the past few years, things have changed, and we've contracted with Apex to take on that task force and move forward. And tonight, in front of you, is the review of that plan and some amendments to it, which shows the, the added increase of flow that we've had out at the proposed area, and showing going from the lagoon system with the rapid infiltration basins to a mechanical treatment facility. So what we have in front of you is that amendment that they presented at the last city commission, and we're asking the commission to approve that amendment so we can forward that to the State Health Department.
Thank you, Mr. Sorn. You've heard his introduction. Do we have any comments, questions by city commissioners? I see Mr. Berger here from Apex. I'm sure he can, would be willing to address any questions that you might have.
I think we talked about many of these amendments at our last meeting, I think, two weeks ago.
We did. You know, I think one thing that bears repeating is, in the first six months of 2011, we've seen our flows increase by over 350,000 gallons per day, which is roughly a 20 percent increase from what we were averaging in 2010. And I think a more normal increase would be in the low single digits if you had a kind of a normal increase in population. So this is a pretty dramatic increase. We're bumping up against 100 percent of design in terms of flow. We've got other areas where we're well over 100 percent of design, and I think it bears out very well why we made the decision to upgrade from the rapid infiltration system to the, the mechanical plant. Just a lot of additional and unexpected growth here in Dickinson, so. Mr. Berger, are there any comments that you'd want to make as follow-up, or two weeks ago?
Before we?
No additional comments, President Johnson. I'd be happy to take any questions anyone might have.
I want to say that I compliment you on this. I, I thought this document was, was well done. I mean, there's a lot of technical jargon in here I didn't understand, but I think it's written to the point where those of us who aren't as technically proficient as you in the engineering world are, still get a pretty clear understanding of what the issues are and what the solutions to those issues. So I think it's well done.
Thank you.
All right. Is there a motion then regarding this water treatment plant amendment?
I'll move. We approve the amendment, Mr. President.
We have the motion, the second. Is there further discussion or comments? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mr. Jackson.
Aye.
Mr. Frenzel.
Aye.
Mr. Steiner.
Aye.
Mr. Altman.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. The motion carries. Item D then is the Comprehensive Transportation Plan Agreement. Is that you, Mr. Corton, who's?
Sure, Mr. President. Mr. President, Commissioners, this is an agreement between the city, the contractor, Catamis Lee and Jackson, and North Dakota Department of Transportation for, for Department of Transportation to provide $250,000 to the city to develop the 2035 Comprehensive and Transportation Plan. The contract is a standard contract furnished by DOT, and city staff recommends the execution of this contract. Staff's available if you have any questions.
Okay, thank you. Any comments or questions? Well, would there be a motion then regarding the agreement?
Mr. President.
Mr. Steiner.
Move to approve the agreement on the transportation.
We have the motion, the whistle, and the second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none will vote on the motion. Mr. Steiner.
Aye.
Mr. Frenzel.
Aye.
Mr. Altman.
Aye.
Mr. Jackson.
I'll abstain from the voting, Mr. President.
Okay, Mr. Jackson abstains, and the chair votes aye, so the motion carries. Item E is the Comprehensive Plan. This would be the same transportation plan we were just speaking of, but this is the scope of services and cost breakdown. And, Mr. Corton, is there anything more you'd like to say about that?
Mr. President, the attached is, attached in your commission packet is a copy of KLJ's scope of services and the cost breakdown. The cost breakdown was placed later in your presentation documents, but it was a spreadsheet that, that broke down the total cost for KLJ to perform the comprehensive, Comprehensive and Transportation Plan. The total cost of that would be roughly $397,717. City staff, after numerous meetings on the revision of the scope of service and also looking at the fees, is satisfied with the current proposal and recommends approval. We also have Craig Kubis from KLJ here to answer any questions that you may have about either of those two.
You know, for the, you know, $397,000 is a, is a lot of money. Without getting into too much detail, can you cover, you know, give us some examples of some of the major areas that this plan is going to address?
Major areas that this plan will address, a significant portion of this plan is going to be our public participation portion. And if you look at the fee structure for that, we're looking at an extensive public participation effort, not just only to have public meetings, but to also have surveys, to have a website, also have a roaming kiosk in order for the public to provide their comments on the plan. I think the, this plan is essential that we have public comments and that it's, in essence, brought forth from the public in order to provide, you know, buy-in, and also we want to have consensus. We want the public to feel that this is their plan. Another significant portion of the plan will be the modeling for infrastructure. That also, that will be transportation, and then that'll also be looking at the potential, the, the area of stormwater as well. Transportation, as we're all aware of, is an essential part of the city's, city's vision. We need to look at our current levels and also the future levels with respect to our population, with respect to the vision that the city wants to have, not just today, but also in the future. Land use element, we're going to, one of the main portions of this, we'll be looking at our current housing situation with respect to the community's vision for single-family and multifamily. Also, where do we, how do we address our temporary housing shortage and affordability, affordable housing, and also historic preservation? So those issues will be addressed as well. Let's see, I could walk through that. Parks and recreation will be, will be looked at, city's infrastructure, as I spoke earlier, and then also the city services. Part of this plan will be to look at our existing city services, such as fire and police, and see where we are as a community, and how do we provide those services? Do we have a proper level of service or a standard for that? And how do we address that sufficiently for future expansion of the buildings, and then also for staff as well? And then an integral part of this will be looking at, will be looking at our transfer, looking at our population, providing different, different scenarios, different growth scenarios, and also how would we fund our different alternatives that we would have for land use, transportation, and the, ultimately, the community's vision for the future.
So it is a really, it's a well-named plan when we call it a comprehensive plan, and we're covering all the major areas here. How long do we anticipate that'll take to develop this plan?
We are looking at trying to have the plan done by June of next year. So essentially, at this point, we're looking at trying to get the plan done within nine months.
Okay.
That's very, I, I think it could be done. It's, you know, we've, the, the plan itself has been a little delayed going through the scope of work and trying to get the contracts together, but I think that we can get it done by June of next year. We want to make sure ultimately that this plan is a detailed, thorough plan. I don't want to rush it, but I think that that timeframe is, is sufficient timeframe for us to shoot for.
Okay. Well, thank you for those comments. Commissioners, do you have any of your own comments or questions that you'd like to pose here?
Mr. President, the, the one thing that I don't think you mentioned, unless I missed it, is there is a housing aspect of this plan as well. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Public may be interested in that part of things.
Absolutely. As I mentioned earlier, Commissioner Jackson noted that we'll be looking at our current situation and also future one with respect to our population and the vision of the city, single-family, multifamily, affordable housing, and also historic preservation as well as part of our housing element.
So the, you know, a, a portion of this plan then involves transportation that's going to look at those issues that we have in terms of, especially our north-to-south movement of, of traffic with the grade separation issues and over, potential overpass, those types of issues will, will get some attention in, in this plan?
Absolutely, Mr. President. We will be looking at the, just to give you some general ideas of some of the areas, we'll be looking at our, our western side or our truck bypass, we'll be looking on the west side of the city. The, the sub, I guess we'd call it the subgrade or the, dealing with the issue of, between Villard and, and Broadway on Highway 22, in which the, in which the city goes underneath the railroad, how to address that situation. We'll be looking at future transportation corridors, our north-south routes, and then we'll also be looking at internal roads as well for future expansion. We want to make sure that we have at least designated where those roads would be, so as development happens, we could properly, those areas could be properly set aside as part of Platts, so that we don't have to come back through and have to buy up right away as well.
Okay. Well, very good. Any, Mr. Kessel.
President Johnson, Commissioners, I just wanted to clarify one point. Mr. Corton spoke about population, and although that is a very important part of the comprehensive plan, it is not included in the scope of work that's related to KLJ. That portion has been pulled out and is related to your next item agenda, or agenda item, NDSU. So I just wanted to make sure you were aware that KLJ isn't doing the population portion. NDSU will be doing that.
Well, we know that that's in good hands then, so. Okay. Anything else on the comprehensive plan that, would there be a motion then regarding the contract here?
I'll make the motion to approve.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
We have the motion, the second, and I, this is a motion to award the contract to KLJ.
And, Mr. President, I'm going to again abstain.
Mr. Jackson will abstain. Is there any other discussion?
Mr. President, just one. How often will be, will the city be updated on the progress of this? I'm guessing that what I don't, what we don't want is that come next June, a stack in front of us. You know, I, I think we want to be updated quarterly. If that works for you.
Yes. Craig Kubis with Catamis Lee and Jackson, Mr. President, Commissioner. We plan on being in regular contact with Mr. Corton, but the intent of, of the project is, you know, while it's a lot of work to, to fit into nine months, that we would have intermediate deliverables, that we need to get a land use plan before that nine-month time period is up, and that we have at least a preliminary transportation plan before those nine months are up. So we'll be coming back to the commission regularly. I would guess as often as, as you'd like to see me here. We'll be here to present our progress, preliminary reports that we'll have completed to date. So we plan on, like I said, working very regularly with Mr. Corton and the Engineering Department as well.
I think it'd be beneficial, we saw the preliminary reports as we go along here until next June, so when we get the final report, we're somewhat familiar with the entire project again.
And that's something that Mr. Corton and I just discussed last week, that we'll have a draft report, hopefully probably late winter, and then revisions that we would have to that draft report based on public input and, and comment from city staff. We would incorporate those into the final document and then summarize that in, in a document as well, so the commission can see those changes and, and why the, the report took a direction that it did, that we have, you know, a summary of, of what input we took from the public and from city staff that shaped the plan.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I'll just amplify what Commissioner Steiner said. I, I think one of the ways to generate public awareness and, and public support are, you know, through frequent reports to the city commission, since you get on Channel 19 and then the public gets a chance to view that at, at their convenience. And so I, I would encourage you to show up frequently and give updates.
We will do that.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome. We still have a motion on the table. Is there other discussion regarding this motion? Not, we'll go ahead and vote. Mr. Altman.
Aye.
Mr. Steiner.
Aye.
Mr. Frenzel.
Aye.
Mr. Jackson abstains. Chair votes aye, so that motion carries. Then we get to item F regarding the NDSU Population Economic Conditions Proposal. And, Mr. Corton, are you introducing that also?
Yes, Mr. President. Commission members, if you recall, this proposal is a result of KLJ removing NDSU as a subcontractor for the Comprehensive and Transportation Plan. We discussed that at the last meeting. Consequently, the city is proposing to directly hire them at a reduced rate to avoid overhead costs. Since NDSU is a public entity and the city is not a private firm, the state allows NDSU the ability to reduce, reduce consulting fees to public entities such as a city. The Population and Economic Condition Proposal is an integral part of the forthcoming Comprehensive Plan. The total cost is $65,204. City staff recommends approval of the proposal. If approved, city staff will come back with a consultant agreement in the near future. And with that, I'm available for any questions you have. We do have representatives from NDSU to ask, answer any questions you may have as well.
Thank you, Mr. Corton. Are there any comments or questions? Any questions for the NDSU representatives? How's the football team going to do this year? Tough, okay?
I guess I have one question, just on timeframe too and coordinating with KLJ to make sure that everything flows. What kind of timeframe do you think that you'll be looking at?
Mr. President, Commissioner Altman, we look at doing the population projections in the months four through six. Naturally, those, they would need those to get completed on the front end because they're an integral part of the strategic planning process afterwards. The fiscal impacts part of it would come in the later months. I think we had stated in the proposal that those would come in months six through 12, or six through 10. So they'll be on the front end of it. And again, that's something that we'll coordinate closely with, with the city planner's office to make sure that those are, are in the right people's hands in a timely fashion.
Great. Thank you.
Could you identify yourself?
I'm sorry, pardon me. My name is Nancy Hoder. I'm an Assistant Research Professor in the Department of Ag Business and Applied Economics at North Dakota State University.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Question I have is, you know, we've been, here in Dickinson now, we're commonly talking about two populations. One is kind of the, the official population that you probably get with a census, and then two is a service population, the number of people we're actually serving. When, when you, the process that you go through, will you be looking more towards our service population or more towards what, again, I, I think the census people would, would count as population?
Mr. President, if I may, I'd also like to acknowledge my colleague Dean Banksen, who'll be working very closely on this project, and I might add, ask Dean to join me. He may have some input on this. We'll be working together.
Okay.
Basically, what we've proposing to do is a customized population projection for the city of Dickinson that takes just into consideration exactly those things that you, that you brought up. Just simply limiting a population projection to a standard cohort modeling would leave out a big, big chunk of what's going on in the city of Dickinson. So what we're planning on doing is using that cohort modeling, and we'll be working with the Census Data Center at NDSU, but then we'll be adding another layer on top of it that will take into consideration the unique things that are going on in Dickinson and this, and in Stark County. Particularly, we're going to be modeling employment effects from the energy sector. And again, we'll, we'll be And again, we'll be modeling it three ways, you know, looking at a projected, kind of a consensus view, a very optimistic view, and maybe one a little bit less than consensus. So, we do plan on taking into that, into consideration the standard population modeling and also the employment issues that you've got going on with the growth in the oil patch. And I guess the third piece that I forgot to mention is also taking a look at what I'm calling a permanent transient population, that portion of the population that wouldn't normally be captured by the census, that, you know, that population that turns over in your hotels every two weeks or is living in campers or things like that. Does that answer your question?
That does.
Okay.
I mean, and it's, you know, the service population is really the population that we have to have the infrastructure to take care of and...
Exactly. They may not count as a normal, you know, their normal residents wouldn't be here, but for functional purposes for now and into the immediate, near future, you know, they are part of the population.
Right.
So, again, we'll, we'll be doing some primary data collection to try and get a reasonable handle on that as best we can in the timeframe that we have.
Okay.
What are some of the methods that you employ for that, or what would citizens look for? We know that when the census comes out, we're going to get the form or we'll get a knock on the door. What can we expect as you delve into, or how do you, what are the methods you use to gather this information?
Well, some of it, we're probably going to have to work closely with the city planners' office, and some of this, we're going to have to talk to people that are out here and get their best estimates, because obviously in this period of time, we won't have the ability to do a real lengthy primary data collection effort. We may tend to end up talking to the folks that are in your CBB and finding out, how many hotel rooms have you got? What's the, what's the average stay? We may go out and count campers, you know, and some of that is, we're going to have to figure some of those out as we go, because we just need to identify the populations that we're going to need to try and quantify. And so, some of the methods that we'll use to go about those, we'll do in conjunction with the city planner and the city manager's office. In terms of the oil patch, you know, has worked extensively with the energy industry in the past and has done several reports that's taken a look at the petroleum industry. So, Dean's uniquely versed in how the energy industry looks and how those employment, employment will drive, potentially drive, population in Dickinson and in Stark County.
Thank you.
I'm Dean Banksen. As Nancy mentioned, one additional thing on the service population is that the Census Department on campus has models which track the inflow of workers that come into cities that are associated with population projections. And we intend to tap into that, to take a look at not just the resident, permanent, temporary, or whatever moniker you want to put on the people that are living outside what's captured with the census numbers, but also include the influx of workers that you're likely to get on a daily basis, which influences the city infrastructure as well.
Okay. Other comments or questions here? Mr. Kessel?
Ms. Hoder, or Mr. Banks, I guess, whichever, we've talked a couple different times. One of the things that is inevitable with a oil boom is an oil bust. City of Dickinson's been through it a few different times. What we don't know is when that's going to happen, five years, 15, 50. Since your timeline is about 20 years, how do you plan to incorporate that eventuality, if it will exist in that 20-year period?
Well, I think, I think what's going to cause or drive the employment change is looking at the nature of employment within the industry. Okay? And so, you have a high degree of employment that's related to the exploration phase of the industry right now. When that largely becomes mature and the exploration is complete, as we best understand what's going to happen with the Bakken play, you're left with the employment that's going to reside to maintain and execute the operational phase of those wells. And so, by understanding the difference between total employment in the industry and what's likely to be absorbed in the city of Dickinson versus the other trade centers, you can sort out and remove those temporary workers and say, look, we're not going to try to, you know, that's one option, we're not going to try to capture housing for that type of, you know, moving population figure. So, I think those are some of the things that we're going to try to bring to the table with this work to help the city of Dickinson with information that lets them decide, you know, on the population numbers we come up with, how much of that they think they need to try to get with housing and what part of it isn't going to be here 20 years from now.
So, you don't know the exact date of the oil bust?
If we did, our contract probably would cost a lot more.
Anything else here?
From NDSU, I thought they'd do better on that.
I thought they would have that date too.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
So, the staff is looking for action on this proposal. I guess specifically they're looking for the Commission, or asking the Commission to approve the proposal. Would there be such a motion?
So moved.
Second.
We have the motion, the second, the other discussion. Hearing them now will vote. Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Frenzel?
Aye.
Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, so the motion carries. We have five o'clock timetable presentation. Mr. Saar, are you going to introduce this one?
Yes, President Johnson. Tonight, we do have Wink and Associates here to give us an update as to where they're at with the landfill master plan project. We did a few months back, entered into an agreement with them to provide some master planning for the life expectancy of the landfill and some of the operations, and they're in the process of doing that. So, they are here tonight to give a PowerPoint and give you an update as to where they're at in the process.
And is it Mr. Randy Hampson?
Randy Hampson with Wink Associates, yes. Thank you, Mr. President and Commissioners. As Sean stated, the city hired Wink Associates to complete a master plan to help in the long-term planning of landfill usage and also to help put plans together prior to getting into a position where it's an immediate need. So, at the same time here, we're completing both a master plan and a permit renewal. Permit renewal is a requirement through the State Health Department. And I got... So, just to start off, kind of a little site plan here, showing the landfill itself and the layout for it. It's a little bit tough to read at the small scale, but this photo, north is orientated towards the top. The western portion of the landfill with the green outline there is the inert waste disposal area. The blue is the MSW disposal area, and then there's some stormwater sedimentation ponds along the east side, Leachate Pond up along the north side there. Some of the major components, and a lot of the master plan and the permit renewal requirements are incorporated together. They overlap by quite a bit, other than the master plan contains a lot more information on the long-range projection of the landfill and some options that are available to the city once they do reach the capacity of the landfill. And just highlighted some of those major components, hydrology, geological setting and site hydrology, population, waste, and airspace projections, potential landfill expansion areas, as well as pretty detailed portions on the general landfill design to include baseliners, final covers, leachate disposal, landfill gas control, groundwater monitoring, and infrastructure within the site there. And then the last component of that is the actual operations of the facility, the landfill itself, as well as the bailing facility. In discussions with city staff, and I know this has probably been, or has been a big hurdle here, guys, especially with hearing tonight on population projections, and working with city staff and discussions, currently, we've got our plan set up for a 10% annual increase through 2014, and then a 1% increase from that point on. Current waste types disposed of at the landfill, shown in the blue there, household is a big majority of it at a little over 62%. And then you've got inert waste and construction materials that make up the other big portions This slide here shows what we're projecting the future waste flows at the landfill to be, and again, that incorporates that 10% annual increase till year 2014, should be 2017, I believe, and then a 1% after that. The top blue line there is MSW landfill, or landfill waste, and the red line is the inert waste. We didn't include the 10% in the inert waste there. We feel a majority of that's probably going to be picked up on the MSW side and be disposed of within the MSW disposal area. So, along with these waste projections over the time, we put together the life expectancy of the MSW disposal area and the inert area. First, we've got the disposal area, and we show three different lines on the graph there. The blue one represents a compaction factor of 1,000 pounds per cubic yard of the waste at the landfill. The green one shows a 1,200 pounds per cubic yard compaction rate, and then the blue or purple there shows a 1,400 pound per cubic yard compaction rate. We wanted to show this variation because as you can see, the numbers up at the top, there's the year that the landfill would hit its design capacity at those different in-place volumes of waste. So, obviously, better compaction we can get, you can add quite a few years on to the life of your facility. Same graph here, other than we're showing the inert landfill life expectancy. Typically, with inert waste, you get a significantly less compaction rate than you do with MSW. A lot of it's bigger, bulkier material, that's tougher to compact than typical MSW is. And the rates we've got there are 850 pounds per cubic yard, 1,000 pounds per cubic yard, and 1,100. So, that range of meeting the design capacity of the inert landfill ranges from the 2018 to the 2021 year mark. You know, this one's a little tough to show. It just, it shows our design base grades for the MSW area and then the inert disposal area right to the west of that area. This is a final grades of both the MSW, this one's turned, inert landfill's up on the top there, which is the western side of the landfill, and then below that is the MSW portion of the landfill. And basically, we run a constant grade up a portion of the landfill, and then we flatten it out to help with surface water and stormwater control on the landfill itself. Next, we've got a few cross-sections. The top one is a, it's an exaggerated horizontal factor, and the bottom one is at a one-to-one scale. Wanted to include both of those because a lot of times, people see the exaggerated one, and it looks like a huge mountain out in the middle of nowhere that you're going to have. So, that's why we included the one-to-one area there. And this is a section running east and west through the landfill. The inert landfill disposal area is on the left side with the larger portion being the MSW disposal area. Cross-section going north, south through the site, and this is through the MSW disposal area. And again, we've got the exaggerated cross-section view as well as a one-to-one scale shown there. The hatched blue area on the left-hand portion of it is an area that we so far identified as potential future expansion for the landfill itself. One of the items, solid waste operations, as mentioned before, we look at personnel and equipment for properly operating a facility, which again goes back to meeting requirements at the State Health Department, as well as maximizing the life of the city's facility that they've got there. And there'll be a pretty good in-depth discussion in the final report on both the personnel and the equipment that is needed based off of the city's operations and the amount of waste that they've got coming in. Next is our schedule for this project. Sean had mentioned, we had gotten awarded this project earlier this summer. So, moving forward here now, we're going to submit the permit, which will include the design report to city staff on August 26th for their review and comment. And after that's received, and any comments incorporated into a final document will be submitted to the State Health Department on September 7th, which is the renewal date that the state has set for the city, that they need to see that permit renewal document. Master plan submitted will be going to the city staff on October 15th for review comment, and then we'll finalize that on November 1st. Back when we had discussions on fees and the scope for this, it was determined that there wasn't enough money in this year's budget to complete everything that needed to be completed. So, what we did is we sat down with city staff, went through the items that we felt could be held off until 2012 to complete, while still complying with State Health Department rules and requirements on that. So, right now, we've got those following tasks to be completed in 2012. There's very, various operational plans that need to be prepared, updated, residuals management plan, as well as a financial analysis of the landfill. And that's all I've got. If there's any questions or comments?
Do you have questions or comments?
Mr. President.
Mr. Jackson.
Mr. Hanson, can you expand a little bit more on the 2012 task? You listed as various plans for preparation, updating. Can you tell us a little bit more about that, what you have in mind?
Yeah. The, basically, the State Health Department divides up the landfill into different operating areas of it. You've got the compost facility out there, the MSW operations, disposal operations, the inert waste disposal operations. They require a closure plan as well as a post-closure care plan for the facility. And those are typically standalone documents from the permit itself, and they are submitted to the State Health Department. So, that would, those plans would outline items that needed to be performed, whether it be the actual operations of itself or inspections, periodic inspections that need to be completed by city staff or others involved in the project.
Okay. Thank you.
When you look at the proposed expansion for the landfill, just looking at the picture, it looks like it doubles the size, is that correct?
Yes. It's real close to it. And we're actually, in the final document, we'll have volumes in there as well as an estimated life expectancy for that expansion.
Okay.
And we'll also, I didn't touch too much on it, but we will also look into potential for a vertical expansion at the facility too down the road, if it was determined that it makes sense to go higher than what we've currently got it at, as well as looking for additional property off-site, which is a tough one, but that's also something that'll be discussed in that master plan, so that the options will be laid out there for the city and so the city planners can get an idea of what needs to be done and what needs to happen going down the road, so you guys continue to have options for disposal of your waste.
And at this point, we're being very proactive and have plenty of time to start making those changes.
We do. The MSW site, I think we were in that 24 to, 25 to 34-year range, depending on the compact... compaction rates there. The inert disposal area is quite a bit less. I think in the low end, we're down to about nine years, up to 13 or 14 there. So the inert one is something that will, should be looked at before too long.
And does our current equipment hit the compaction rate that we need to, or would it be an equipment upgrade to?
I, we've spent quite a bit of time out at the landfill, looking at the operations. And our feeling is there definitely should be some equipment purchased there to increase that, that volume there. When you can, you can increase your lifespan as much as nine years on that MSW site, that's huge, huge in spending that capital, extra capital money for equipment to get to that point.
Thank you.
Mr. Hansen, have you run any sensitivity analysis on the MSW life expectancy? For example, you know, your population projections after, I think we reached 2017 is to grow by 1% a year. If we grew at 1.5 or 2%, what would happen to the life expectancy?
Right. And in our final document, we plan to use a range there, because it is a big unknown, as you guys know better than anybody, of what's going to be happening down there. So we will show a range there. I think we'll most likely come to that conclusion with discussions with city staff, and even if there's other information available, in the meantime, that those numbers could easily be updated.
Yeah, you know, right now, it looks fairly comfortable, 24 to 33-year life expectancy. But if we have growth rates that exceed your assumptions, I imagine we could see that timeframe drop pretty dramatically.
Yes, yes, absolutely, absolutely. And that's, like I said, we will show a variation, or a couple of different, or multiple different scenarios for the growth there, because it's, at this point, you can't get it down to exact science of how long that's going to last you. There is some variables there that affect it greatly.
Do you factor in any scenarios if we start employing some recycling efforts, or expand our recycling efforts, or make any recommendations along those lines as far as extending the life?
Yes, we do. In fact, in 2012, that will be part of the work we'll be doing on the residuals management side of it. We'll look at the waste stream that you guys have got coming in right now, and do a little sorting and determining what is still left in that waste stream that's currently getting landfilled, and provide some options for the feasibility of removing that from the waste stream and recycling it, wanting to increase the life of your landfill, as well as a lot of those, there's worth some money when you can get them onto the recycling market.
Other, Mr. Kessel?
President Johnson, Mr. Hansen, I got a question regarding population and such. Since our landfill is a regional one, I assume your population included those areas that we currently serve outside of the city of Dickinson?
Yes, they will. For what, right now, for the presentation, we've included, essentially, we took the population, current population of Dickinson, and based that percentage on that. But we are looking at the, because you guys do serve a pretty large area for your landfill, and those are included in on the final document.
Okay. And then a follow-up, if I may. Is population, obviously must be the best measurement tool for you to predict future inflows into the landfill, but I'm curious, because of the type of businesses that are in and around our area, do they use or produce waste in a higher quantity than others? And is population, do you use another factor to take that in mind?
We will, we are aware that the landfill's been taking in quite a bit of waste that's coming from the oil field side of it, not necessarily oil field waste itself, but even municipal waste from those sites, that we realize that that is higher now than it was prior. So those will be factors in on it, too, the industry, as well as the population itself.
Thank you.
Anything else? Very good. Thank you for being here. We have a 520 timetable agenda item. This is a public hearing, and it regards the builders' and buyers' exemption. We had a presentation at the previous city commission meeting by city staff, raising the issue of whether or not Dickinson should continue with the policy of having the builders' and buyers' real estate tax exemption. So at this time, we declare the public hearing open. Anybody that wished to comment regarding this issue may do so. Just come to the podium, state your name, and we'll hear your comments.
Good evening, Mr. President, Commissioners. My name's Kyle Koontz, Koontz Builders. I'm also here representing the Dickinson Area Builders Association. I guess before I start, if I could ask one question, it was brought from the staff to the commission to review it, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. I guess, I don't remember exactly when I came here, when the state legislators reworked the bill in the century code and brought it to the cities to relook at this. I was here, I think, I believe it was two years ago. I'll probably skip through some of the stuff I threw at you guys last time, as far as numbers, and just talk about maybe our climate that we have right here in Dickinson right now. Thinking about this, and it was brought to my attention last week, my mind went in about 50 different directions on where this all hits our community. I'm just going to probably give you the short version, but one of the things that we saw tonight were a lot of studies. And one of the things that I'm looking at is doing an impact study done by our Home Builders Association, our national association, that does a study to show the impact of what housing does for a community. I have some in front of me from Bismarck, Fargo, Minot, Williston. Williston is just kind of in the same spot, they want to get one going. I want to do an impact study here also, because housing pays for itself. It's different than anything else that a community can do, because the tax dollars that are generated from every single house that's built. The tax exemption I'm talking about is more for the homeowner. A few of the points I just want to touch base on is, we have a demand for housing that's at a higher level than it has been in the past. And we have a supply that's below that demand now. I know when I brought it to you guys last time, I heard a few questions that were thrown at me. Do buyers look at this as a deciding factor when they build a new house? And I'll get to that, because I meet with every one of our homeowners, and it is a factor. But my point being with that, every new house that's built in the city of Dickinson, there's a chain reaction. It's a new house, it's on the tax roll, and when someone decides to build a new house or purchase a new house, usually, they have a house on the market. And there's a chain reaction. How I best can describe that is, I'm speaking from my stand at Koontz Builders. When I have a couple that comes into my office and we sit down and talk, it's, a lot of times, it's a long-term Dickinson resident that has paid taxes for a lot of years, and that has equity in their house, and they now see this as an opportunity for them to sell their house, and maybe move up in size, update, get a newer house, and they're on the fence. And we sit down, we talk about the numbers. They talk to their realtor on what they can sell their current house for. We talk about all those things. And then we also sit down and look at, you know, this new house has specials, okay? And we weigh all the numbers, they go to their bank, we weigh out the numbers. This house, for example, I'm just throwing the number out, this house has $9,000 in specials. Then we talk about the tax exemption, and more than not, homeowners are aware of it, and they bring it up to me more than I bring it up to them. And they say, what does that consist of? And I explain it to them. And they look at it in simple numbers, and you can twist it however you want. You pay this in specials, and roughly, if the house is assessed at 230,000, you roughly get $1,400 off a year, and they do the balance sheet. So they see them spending dollars, but they get a little break, because they get an exemption. Nothing, nothing I'm telling you guys is something you don't already know, but the thing to remember is, with every new house, there's taxes produced at every angle, from taking raw land and turning it into streets, from all the way to the finish of the house, there's taxes that are produced through the whole project. Not just in property taxes, there's sales taxes that are generated, corporate taxes that are generated, income taxes, it's just a tenfold scenario there. And that's one of the main reasons I say that housing pays for itself. I guess one of the things, looking, when I did talk to city staff from the assessor's office, one of his comments to me was, a Minot was looking at getting rid of their exemption in Williston. Well, when I checked, Minot has no plans on getting rid of their exemption. But when I thought of that, and I sat down and I actually thought about that, is, I was told last time, and this person threw this out there, is, this exemption is put there to entice buyers when we need to entice buyers. And one of the comments was, don't you want to leave a few bullets in the gun for when we need them? Well, I don't want to have to wait until we have to have to need them. I think now's the time, we need to spur more. I'm not saying we're trying to be greedy, but in a time where we need affordable housing, it starts with new housing. We get people out of apartments, we get them into houses, put them on the tax roll. When I heard before about all those service people in town, how we even calculate them as members of our society, is get them into housing. And it might not be that new house, but it could be in that chain reaction down the line. So I probably went on longer than I needed to. We talked about some of the stuff last time, but I really think this is an important tool the city should use, because remember, we're also competing against other cities. These companies aren't just working here in Dickinson, they might be regional, and they, their people are coming and checking out Dickinson, they might find a house in Keel there, they might find one in Glen Allen, and we want to entice them to come here, to Dickinson. And I think this is one of the tools we can. And I don't want to be the one city that doesn't have it. We talked a little bit about NDSU and Fargo. Fargo's always had this exemption, and they continue to grow on their own. And I know they don't have a boom and a bust, but it's exemption that works, and I think it should stay in place. So that's all I have for now. I didn't want to spit numbers at you like I did last time, but I know those impact studies show that not only taxes are generated in that first year a house is built, but every year after it. And that's why housing pays for itself. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Koontz. A question for you. Your comments tonight, you mainly talked about the exemption from the buyer's perspective. The current city policy also has a builder's exemption in there. Do you think that's needed at this time?
This is not the association's standpoint. From my personal view, I really wasn't a fan of how it works. This past year, we were able to use it on five houses, but it was a special circumstance. The part that's tough with that exemption is, you have to turn into the assessor's office, I believe it's February, for which houses you're going to want exemption on, okay? So it happened this year that I had some houses that we started in November that carried over that first of the year, and then they closed in April or May. It worked for us, we used it on five houses. Majority of builders that don't have that scenario, I don't think a large amount of builders are using that exemption. And the numbers would probably tell you more than just my point of view on that, but I don't think it got used. The first year, I think a lot of guys were flat-out confused. And it even got to the point where I didn't notice it until we got done on the closing statements, and noticed the taxes on there, called the Stark County, come the assessor's office, oh yeah, you did have it on your form, let's revisit that. So it was a tough scenario. But I'm here mainly because, yeah, I would enjoy the tax exemption as a builder, but I think it's here for the homeowners. They're the one who has to decide, who, they live in their house for here for 20 years, they're the ones who are sitting around the kitchen table saying, you know what, I think it's time we sell our house, let's buy a new one. And they're the ones that are reinvesting in Dickinson.
Okay. Does anybody else have a question or comment for Mr. Koontz? Mr. Kessel?
Mr. Koontz, can you tell me, Minot has the buyer's exemption, do they have the builder's exemption?
Um, I can tell you that here. And just to clarify, Minot currently is at 75,000.
That was my next question.
Yeah.
So they exempt 75, where we're exempting 100?
I did not bring that with me.
How about Williston, do they have any exemptions?
They do not at the moment, no.
Okay.
Just kind of, one, I'll just throw out a couple things, and I know it, I'll just make one comment, and I don't want to comment it, because it's nothing that pertains here, but I read an article in the paper a couple weeks ago about what this costs the city as a cost. But there was not the other side of the story of how many taxes are generated. I understand that the tax exemption, you have to defer taxes for two years, sometimes in a scenario for three, but it's not really a cost, because that house is on the tax roll forever, and there are so many taxes that are generated there. If I can go back just a little bit, the first time this came up, Mr. Kessel, I was able to sit down with him, have a nice conversation with him. He actually set up a meeting with someone from the public schools, I believe it was Vince Reeve, there was a gal there from Stark County, Jan Zent at the time was there, himself, me, and a couple others, talking about where those tax dollars go. And I remember it was a tough sell to the public schools. But in the end, when they saw the point of invest a little bit, you get a lot back, and then, you know, we talked about that article two weeks ago, and then a couple days later, we get an article seeing the surplus that the public schools have. And it's all good to see them have money, but this only helps them get more money over the longer period of time. And I think this is something that stimulates new construction, because I can tell you, when I sit down with every client and write a contract, it is brought up and it's talked about.